Okay, it's 6:30 Thursday, February 8th, and I'm calling the lift meeting to order. I'm gonna do a roll call. Jason Henderson.
Yeah.
Kevin Seeler.
Seiler here.
Sorry, it's Seiler. Sorry.
It's Sylle Seeler.
It's Sylle Seeler, but it's not Seiler.
Carol Briesak.
Here.
Nicholas Mallar.
Here.
Cindy Christensen.
Here.
Joseph Arino.
Here.
Okay. Jack Reichecky.
Present.
Okay, all present. Alright, now we're gonna do an election of the... First, let me say, inside your books, each of you have a book, and inside those books are this smaller packet. And then, in the ring binder part is just documents. It's got your bylaws, the Columbine Plan, all the resolutions we've done, the cooperation agreement with the city, there's the laws in there, and there's some open meeting records, things to follow. So, that's just... And those are yours to keep. You can take them with you. Okay. So now, we're gonna take election of the chair, and I need nominations for election of the chair, please. Anybody wanna nominate a chair?
May I self-nominate?
Absolutely.
Need a second?
Not yet. We're just nominating. Anybody else nominating?
I would nominate Kevin Seiler.
You nominate Kevin, okay? Seiler, Seiler, Seiler. I'm gonna get it right. I will. Promise. Anybody else? Any other chair nominations? Okay, and your bylaws say that you will do it by a hand vote, but hold your hands up so that I can get the count.
Do you have a question?
Yes, sir.
Oh, excuse me, it isn't a majority. I'm sorry, I thought we might have three. I was gonna wonder if plurality would work.
No, we've got seven of you. So, we've got a full board.
I have another question.
Yes.
I kinda feel like the people running should make a statement.
We can do that?
If they're...
I'm totally up for that. Okay, so we have no more nominations? Hearing none. I'll close the nomination period. Carol, would you like to address the board?
Sure. I have been involved in urban renewal from, like, this January 2014, and have attended all but maybe two or three of these meetings over the years. And was applied to be on a year ago in April. And one of my goals in applying was to get some of the concerns that some of the citizens had, including myself, over the years. Some of our concerns responded to because as citizens, we weren't having things responded to. And I had real concerns about how things were being done, and it's real important to me that we do things according to the law, according to the resolutions that we... Our city council has passed, and according to our agreements that we had in place. And that's why I applied and was appointed. People know me. I have been involved in urban renewal on the side of 300, which was to give the citizens a right to vote on anything that impacted their taxes through tax increment financing or through imminent domated condemnation. And people think that I'm automatically just oppose urban renewal, but that has not been my position. If it had been my position, that's what 300 would have said. I believe urban renewal is a viable option and important tool for municipalities to have in certain areas. But the law is very specific in how and what we do. So, when I applied, the council was asking me about that, and I want this group... I don't wanna be part of a group that's not... ...successful. And so, we go back through the history, look at our documents, and understand what it is that we have to deal with, and how we have to navigate. Because we don't just have the urban renewal law to navigate. We have the law, we have resolutions, and we have cooperative agreements that are in place, and we need to understand all of them in order for us to know how to proceed. We have some process documents in here that were written by lift boards where there's not a single person on this board was present when they were created. And I believe, before we can even get to that, we need to know what our foundation is, and then we need to review the process documents in order to be prepared for a project that, from what we're hearing, might be imminent. So, I think we have a lot of work. Wasn't able to get this work in front of the lift board since April, when I came on, and I feel like I'm the only one on the lift board that has the history that goes along with this, and would like to lead the group through that. Any questions?
Over the past year that I've been on the lift board, we have muddled through a lot of the things that... These procedural things that Carol's talking about. And in the process of doing that, I think we have failed the citizens and the council by not engaging the property owners in this area and to get a proposal or some sort of urban renewal project in front of us. So, at that point, we can start evaluating and debating the merits of that proposal. You know, on Monday, I had the opportunity to go to the Bellevue...
Corridor Plant.
Thank you. Corridor Plant. And was listening to some of the residents in that area, and they're very concerned about the safety, the security, their property values. They have been looking at this property that's not been fully utilized for five-plus years. And for us to get mired down into procedural things and not have arguments over the merits of a project and working with the property owners, whether that's calling them, you know, each take attorney every month, call in the developers, "Hey, we're here. Let's work with us." Whether or not a project is ever done, I think it's our goal to do whatever it can is to engage into property owners and get them to sit down with us and to explore the possibility of a project. And then, we can work through some of these other procedural things as we do that. Like I said, it's been a very... It was very frustrating for, you know, some of the other board members that have resigned or have moved on to city council. You know, we had these discussions, and I'd rather like to see this committee be steered in a direction where we're actually doing something that benefits the city and the immediate community around this area. Thank you.
Okay.
May I speak?
Absolutely.
On behalf of Mr. Seiler. You know, I'm new to the board. I look at the bylaws, I look at what the chairman has to do. This is your responsibility. But you're also a point person during the month, and you're gonna be dealing with, hopefully, some developers. We have to deal with Chang and others. I think somebody that's the chairman should have a lot of construction experience and know how development works. So, Seiler does that for a living. I believe that's why I nominated him, because I would like to see somebody in the chairmanship that has some understanding of the people whom we might come in contact with, that are gonna be the ones that are gonna do the projects that we're supposed to assist.
Okay. Anybody else? Okay. Let's vote. Those in favor of Commissioner... Or Board Member Briesak, raise your hand, please. Okay. And those in favor of Kevin Seiler, please raise your hands. One, two, three. Okay. So, Kevin is our new chairman, and now I will take nominations for vice chair. Anyone want to nominate for vice chair?
Carol Briesak.
Anybody else?
I nominate Jack.
Jack. Okay, so, would we like them to speak as well?
Well, we haven't heard from Jack.
We haven't heard from Jack, so, I mean...
Well, you heard my... Part of my spiel. I'm new to the board, and I'm not quite new to civic governance since I was on the board with Joseph. I just resigned today. A little bit late, but anyway, I have served three years on that. Prior to that, I had been on the board planning the zone for the town of Columbine. So, I'm familiar with civic boards, and so that's why I read closely what the chairman and, of course, the vice chairman of the city would have to do during the course of the month. I estimate it's probably gonna be about at least 10 hours of additional work beyond the walls here. And quite frankly, I work... I'm self-employed. I work for myself in terms of that I can deal with my time. And so, I can adjust it so that I can meet the demands if I have to deal with issues of Mr. Seiler. And number three, I nominated Mr. Seiler because of his experience in development. Well, that's what I do for a living. I'm not a developer. I'm an architect. And I had a chairman of the board once for the bank I worked for. He said, "Never put an architect on the board of directors. All they wanna do is build and do building." Yes. Well, we're investing for the future. I'm not necessarily 100% that we have to build anything new. I do like renovations and all that. But if you looked at my very quite holistic career, I have been a lender. I have put together huge packages for municipal debt. I made loans to developers. I now deal... I consult with banks under all their construction laws. And so, it means I'm out there deeply with the developers, architects, engineers, contractors, lenders, and the craftsmen on a daily basis. Think I have something to add, particularly if we have to sit down and deal with development. In terms of dealing with the public, when I worked for EPA, I had a lot of public meetings and had to deal with that on the water systems that I regulated. So, even though it's a surprise to get nominated, if elected, I will serve.
Okay. Anybody else have any statements?
Not to repeat what has already been stated, but I think at this point, it would be very beneficial for the group to have... For me to be able to work with Kevin, I really am concerned that these documents that do create the foundation, that they can cause us to fail if we do not at least try to understand what it is that we're dealing with. So, we could have the most wonderful development coming forward, but if we don't prepare and take this through the proper process, get the right people at the table, we can fail as a board, not as a development. And I would prefer that we, as a board, succeed. And if something comes forward and doesn't succeed, that it's the development's issue and not an issue here because we didn't pay attention to some of the requirements that we have. They go beyond the law.
I just wanted to add, the reason I nominated Carol is I think it'd be an interesting coalition of government to have you together because she has a vast knowledge of the requirements here. And even if reasonable people can differ on what a particular rule means, she has a deep... Just a deep well of awareness of where those things are. And I think it would be an interesting team and a good team. So, anyway, that was why. And I mean absolutely no disrespect to Mr. Reichecky. I have utmost respect there.
Okay. Everybody made their statements? Alright, we'll vote. Carol Briesak, raise your hand. Three, four. Alright. And Jack Reichecky?
One, two, three.
Okay. So, Carol will be our vice chair. And... That's it.
What are you gonna back this up just a minute?
Absolutely.
Being a new board member, I'd really like to have introductions from people so that, you know, I can just kinda understand who I'm working with.
I was gonna do that next. It's not on here. It's not on here, but I thought the same thing because I was like... In my mind, I was just thinking, "Gosh, these people don't even know each other." So, now, we'll just amend a little bit before we move to the minutes, and go ahead and start over here with Joe, and have Joe introduce himself, tell us about you, and then we'll just go around the table.
My name is Joe Arino. I'm a native Littletonian. How you say it? Yeah. I moved away for a while to do school, and I went to law school, and I'm a practicing attorney. I am in-house. I've never been with a firm, and I always wanted to be in-house. I like the perspective of being in-house because I come to understand that my role as an attorney is something... You know, setting the rails and helping things get done, not putting up roadblocks, but helping to answer, "How can we get this done properly?" I'm excited to be on the board. I just moved back to Littleton less than a year ago with my wife and my son, and we have another one on the way. And this is my first time being involved with local government. I used to be involved in volunteering in national politics and things like that, and then a mentor of mine said, "You know, you have a lot more done at the local level and other things." And so, I began following what's going on here in Littleton and took an interest in urban renewal and what's going on here. Happy to be here. Thank you.
I'm Carol Briesak. I'm not a native, but I moved here. I'm an Air Force brat, so when I was 12 years old, my father retired here for a second career. I live next door to where I grew up. Mother was next door for years, and she's passed away within the last year and a half. Our daughter will be moving next door, so I get grandkids that move in next week next door to me, which is wonderful. I am a small business owner. I have a business, mostly online, but my shop is on Littleton Boulevard. I'm just very active in the local issues, and this is one of those arenas that I've been more than active in. And it's actually kind of a fascinating process, and I'm really looking forward to us getting somewhere down the road because we have floundered for long enough.
I'm Kevin Seiler. I work for the Community College of Denver as the director of facilities. Moved here about four and a half years ago from the Detroit area. We were starting to look for a place to live. We found... Discovered Littleton. It reminds us a lot of where we lived back in Michigan. We liked the older downtown feel, the walkability of it, and a lot in the community. We've made a lot of friends since we moved here, good relationships and such, and just wanted to get more involved with the community and with the local government and politics. And got on this... Was appointed to this board a year ago, and was reappointed two days ago, so we're ready for another five more years.
Hi, I'm Cindy Christensen, and I have lived in Littleton for about 22 years now. And I have my own business, Christensen Consulting. So, I do some consulting work in strategic planning and that type of thing, facilitation, project management. So, I just have spent the last 10 years working with Urban Land Institute, which is a real estate organization that has a lot... They don't actually advocate building, but they bring a lot of people together to collaborate and do some things and that type of thing. Before that, I was actually working for an organization called Urban Leadership in Economic Development, and so I was very involved with the Denver Urban Renewal Authority as we were trying to get different buildings redone, especially on 16th Street Mall where we had some gaps and that type of thing. Of course, about when I left is when downtown just started going to people crazy and have all the prisons up there, but it was fun when I was there too. So, I thought that I had some skills that might be good for the urban renewal here, and I'm very interested in it. So, I decided to apply, and like I said, by the council, by the vice chair.
It was significant. I've lived here for two years. I went through a similar process to Kevin. Designed, reappointed, so did that contract there. I work in building energy management software, but my degree's in civil engineering, so I kinda have an urban planning geek side, which is kinda why I originally wanted to join this. And the last year, Kevin sort of pointed out that not a lot of progress happened, so obviously now, it's like, "I wanna see this through. I wanna see us fulfill our duties to the citizens and what our board is supposed to be." So, I'm excited to kinda get everything restarted and, you know, get a little momentum.
Great, thank you. My name is Jason Henderson. I joined the board last year, in March. I have a Texas attorney license. I came to Colorado about five years ago. I do contracts for private corporations around here. I write a lot of children's books, so if you have kids in middle school, I've probably been taught there at some point. And I have a geekiness about city politics that goes back to my childhood because I just wanted to be like my dad, who was always in city planning and city management and so forth. But this is my first time doing it, so I'm really eager. And like I say, I'm barely a year in. There's so much to learn and so much more I wanna learn, and...
Jack Reichecky, I'll fill in the missing one. My wife and I have lived and raised four kids here in the Littleton area since '77. We haven't lived in the city until '99. We lived in Littleton address all the time. And we moved into the city simply because we found a vacant lot and we built a house. We don't live in there anymore because I made a killing on it. We live next to Heritage, but all our kids went to Heritage, and they're all very good suburban citizens.
Okay. Chairman Seiler, you can take over the rest of the agenda.
Okay. So, the next thing on the agenda is the minutes of our last meeting. Those of us that remember that. We had a chance to review those. Are there any questions, concerns, corrections that need to be made? Yes, Carol?
I spoke to Kevin prior to the meeting because I... For those that are new, we don't have anybody that takes our minutes. I have been serving as the recording secretary. So, I take notes and then go home and watch video and try to put something together. And on page... We don't have page. Next to the last page, there's... It says, "Ryan Tool moved to pass the budget as amended. Kevin Seiler?" Question mark, question mark, "Secuted." I don't know who actually seconded that motion, and from the video, it is not clear. So, I'm hoping when we take votes, we can be very verbal about it so that we get a good record. So, Kevin said it may have been him, so I would like to amend the motions to remove the question marks. Does that work?
Do we have a motion to amend and to accept... To accept the minutes as amended?
Motion to accept the minutes as amended.
We have a second?
Second.
Okay. Show your hands. Do we approve? All of us? It's unanimous. Nobody's against it, so the minutes have passed. Now, we're at the point for public comment. Anybody who's here with the public that would like to make a comment, please come up and have a seat and talk. If you give us your name, and again, it's limited to three minutes.
Timer.
Thank you.
Hi, my name is Linda Knuficki. I live in the 4th district. I'd like to make a few comments on the purpose of the Urban Renewal Authority and welcome you to the lift board. At this point in the process, your role on the Urban Renewal Authority is to implement the Columbine Urban Renewal Plan as passed by city council. You're an independent legal entity, separate and distinct from city council. Council's only role with the authority is to pass the plan and to appoint members. They can also abolish the board. Other than that, they have pretty much absolutely nothing to do with this board, other than how you wish to involve the taxing entities within state law. And one thing about the Urban Renewal Plan, it doesn't matter what you think about the plan. It is what it is, and it is what council passed, and you have to make it work for the area. To implement the plan, your role on the authority is to create policies and procedures to judicially... I can't pronounce that. ...evaluate finances of a developer for funding and only funding. In addition to understanding how the developer's finances come into play and will be evaluated, policies must be in place to determine how to spend money, how to evaluate the authority's finances, how to hire attorneys to issue bonds, how to hire attorneys for the authority, and how taxing entities will participate with lift, and how to hire an executive director. I know I'm not touching the beginning of what must be in place before you entertain a developer's proposal, but in my mind, you have to have all your ducks in a row before you talk to a developer. It requires thoughtful and deliberate...
I spoke to Kevin prior to the meeting because I, for those that are new, we don't have anybody that takes our minutes. I have been serving as the recording secretary, so I take notes and then go home and watch video and try to put something together. And on page, we don't have page, next to the last page, there's, it says Ryan Tool moved to pass the budget as amended. Kevin Seiler, question mark, question mark, seconded. I don't know who actually seconded that motion and from the video, it is not clear. So I'm hoping when we take votes, we can be very verbal about it so that we get a good record. So Kevin said it may have been him, so I would like to amend the motions to remove the question marks. Does that work?
Do we have a motion to amend and to accept, to accept the minutes as amended?
Motion to accept the minutes as amended.
We have a second.
Second.
Okay, show your hands. Do we approve? All of us, it's unanimous, nobody's against it, so the minutes have passed. Now we're at the point for public comment. Anybody who's here with the public that would like to make a comment, please come up and have a seat and talk. If you give us your name and again, it's limited to three minutes.
Timer.
You have to, thank you.
Hi, my name is Linda Knuficki. I live in the 4th District. I'd like to make a few comments on the purpose of the Urban Renewal Authority and welcome you to the LIFT Board. At this point in the process, your role on the Urban Renewal Authority is to implement the Columbine Urban Renewal Plan as passed by City Council. You're an independent legal entity, separate and distinct from City Council. Council's only role with the authority is to pass the plan and to appoint members. They can also abolish the board. Other than that, they have pretty much absolutely nothing to do with this board, other than how you wish to involve the taxing entities within state law. And one thing about the Urban Renewal Plan, it doesn't matter what you think about the plan, it is what it is and it is what Council passed and you have to make it work for the area. To implement the plan, your role on the authority is to create policies and procedures to judicially, I can't pronounce that, evaluate finances of a developer for funding and only funding. In addition to understanding how the developer's finances come into play and will be evaluated, policies must be in place to determine how to spend money, how to evaluate the authority's finances, how to hire attorneys to issue bonds, how to hire attorneys for the authority and how taxing entities will participate with LIFT and how to hire an executive directors. I know I'm not touching the beginning of what must be in place before you entertain a developer's proposal, but in my mind, you have to have all your ducks in a row before you talk to a developer. It requires thoughtful and deliberate action. So there are two documents in your packet at the end of your binder and I think these are really important as a starting point to create and organize your debate for the policy and procedures. The documents are the proposed confidential financial statement and then the next is the, this is a mouthful. Littleton Invest for Tomorrow Development Proposal Funding Request Requirements for Proposed Urban Renewal Projects. So, and I also would like to point out that the Urban Renewal Law included in your packet has specific requirements to issuing bonds that I think should be put into your policies and procedures. Remember, you as a board have relatively little input into the development of the property. That role is in the Community Development Department and the City Council via the Planning Commission for the city of Littleton, not the Urban Renewal Authority. Your role is to implement the plan and to work with the developers so that they can use to funding. So to make LIFT a success, please read and understand the laws of finance documents, your own boards finances, your buyer's laws, the actual urban renewal plans, the condition surveys that were created for, to understand the blight conditions in that area. So, and then also please understand the properties in that area, which includes O'Toole's, the county election centers, et cetera, et cetera. And then finally, always remember that the state law says that Urban Renewal Authority does not exist for economic development, it exists for remediation of blight. So never economic development. Thank you. Welcome to the LIFT Board and I wish you a good meeting.
Thank you.
That was spot on. Time wise, I mean, it was spot on.
Are there any other comments from the public that are intended?
I don't have to sweet talk.
Okay.
Hello, my name is Jeannie Erickson. I live in District 1 and I live really close to this urban renewal area. I've been following the saga of Columbine Square and urban renewal since it was revamped in Littleton in March of 2014, longer than some of you have even lived here. Since there are four new members on the board, I thought I would give you a quick overview of what has been going on in the last four years. Three of the four urban renewal areas that were developed under the former city manager were abolished in the last year and a half. All you've got left is Columbine Square, barely. There has never been an urban renewal project under any of the four areas. The property called Columbine Square located at Federal and Bellevue was on the city's schedules to be rezoned back in September of '13 and December of '13 and both of those hearings were canceled and that was before urban renewal even reexisted in the city. Urban renewal didn't come back to Littleton until March of '14. So just for your information, this property owner was going to look at rezoning this property on his own before urban renewal was even reinvented. My guess is that some sort of backdoor deal happened with the former city manager and the property owner. Since the former city manager knew he was going to reinstate urban renewal, but we, the citizens, didn't at that time, he just had the property owner wait for urban renewal. Of course, this is just my humble opinion. Most important thing you need to know as LIFT Board members, in my humble opinion, is that the property owner kicked out all of his tenants by not renewing anyone's leases when they came due, actually making it look like everyone was just moving out little by little. They were all kicked out. This property owner self-plated his own property so that he could possibly try to get money from urban renewal and the taxpayers of Littleton. This property owner owns 70 properties across the United States and they are most likely multi-billionaires. They do not have a gap nor do they need any money from the taxpayers of Littleton. If they don't wish to develop this property as zoned, which is retail commercial, then sell it to someone that will. This property is zoned for retail commercial and needs to stay that way because we are not lacking in apartments in this area and Littleton does not make money from apartments. They actually cost the city money in police and fire. This is...
Thank you, Jeannie.
Oh, you're very welcome. I had much more wonderful things to say.
Thank you.
You sure that was three minutes?
Yes, I have it on timer, I swear.
I can usually do this in three.
Anyone else?
Could she email us her statement if she'd like us to read it afterwards? Is there a means to, for the public to...
You can watch it online.
Okay.
He gets your full text, Jeannie.
I just thought, I just thought if, you know...
Yes, she can email it to, she can email it to me and I will distribute it to you because it would be a meeting if you guys were going back and forth.
I can do that.
Okay.
Please.
My name is Pam Chadhorn and I actually grew up here. I think you can tell by my appearance that I might have been longer than any of you folks, so I did move away for a while and work elsewhere and went to school, but I'm back here now. So I wanted to, I'm glad that Linda and Jeannie gave me some of the history of Columbine Square. Let me point out a couple of things. The Columbine Square Urban Renewal Area is much larger than Columbine Square Shopping Center, so I want you to be aware of that. I think most of us don't feel, I'm going to say, most people in the community, and I've walked around with flyers, talking to people, do not feel that the rest of that should be changed, but they are in this, these other areas, these other properties and parcels are in the urban renewal area plan. So please beware of that. What Jeannie said about the owner is correct, except they're a real estate investment company. This is not a person, it's not a family, it is a real estate investment company. They make money off of medical offices and retail and industrial and multifamily and student housing in 14 or 17 U.S. states. They have a lot of resources at their advantage and so it's hard for me to understand where a gap could occur that you folks could fill. I do not want you to be proactive. I don't want you to go out and try to get urban renewal. We, urban renewal is the most expensive way for a city to use its money to inspire development. There are many other options for a city. Urban renewal should be used as this last resort. So let me say, the final thing that I want you to do is there is a, there are two, a gap analysis and a market analysis that were done by the city staff in July. You must be informed about the prospects for retail at this site, independently of what the developer may say. We pay for this. I want you to hear it. I want it to be in public session so all of us can hear it, so we understand what can be done at that site. The developer applied for rezoning. The developer, the city did not intend to rezon the site, let me clarify what Jeannie said. They applied for rezoning. It never happened because, again, it was probably not in the cards to happen. They wanted to rezone from retail to apartments. That does not bring adequate income into the city to replace. We must keep our retail sites in Littleton. And for walkability and community business, that's what that is. So that, we want to keep that environment in Bellevue area corridor. So, so please make, put time on your schedule to have our staff, the subject manager experts, present the gap analysis, the market analysis for Columbine Square soon. And so we can all hear that and learn from it. It requires technical explanation and then we'll understand what might be worth our city money. Thank you to do this.
Thank you. Anybody else like to speak? Okay, so that closes public comment. The next item is the financial report.
Could you be, my name is Tiffy Root and I'm the Finance Director for the city of Littleton. And in your packet this evening, there are some financial statements related to the year ending 12/31/2017. I do want to apologize that I wasn't able to get the January information for 2018 and just due to the timing of packet information going out and timing of getting information from the bank and everything, I wasn't able to get that in here. So I do apologize. So at the next meeting, we'll definitely have January. Hopefully, we'll have February in there as well. So just a little history on LIFT as far as finances are concerned. LIFT currently has only the Columbine Square area that is receiving property tax increment through the county and also sales tax increment from the city of Littleton. Those are the only revenue sources for Columbine Square currently. The other three urban renewal areas, Littleton Boulevard, North Broadway and San F A were repealed. And also the property tax increment that was received from those areas has partially been refunded. Payments went out in September for amounts that had been received through May of 2017. And I'm hoping as soon as we get the banking issues squared away and transferred to a new member of the board, we can get the second payment out to the county hopefully in the next week, provided that the banking institutions are cooperative in changing naming signatures. So currently, if you want to look at the financial statements, page one, just for you, is a summary of transactions that have occurred through 2016 and 2017. This is more for your information to kind of see what property tax revenues have come in, the sales tax increment from the city as well, and then all the expenses across all of the funds. Currently, it's set up where each urban renewal area has its own fund and then we also have a general fund that is just for general expenditures such as attorney fees, office supplies, trainings of that nature. Page two are the transactions that have occurred in 2017. You'll see the property tax revenues that we continue to get in through 2017 from the three areas, North Broadway in particular, and then the sales tax increment, as I mentioned before, does come from the city of Littleton, it's an annual payment. And then some interest earnings, of course, for banking relationships. And then as far as expenditures, professional consulting, there's some legal services that were incurred throughout the year. The county does charge a fee to LIFT to collect the property taxes, so you'll see a county collection fee. And then the large expenditure that you see there for $440,099 was the first refund payment that went to the taxing entities for property taxes received through May of 2017.
Can you stop right there?
Sure.
I've seen the deficiency of revenues and I have to admit, for all my bookkeeping background, I still get very turned around with how the city accounts for things, but it's showing revenues don't keep up with the expenditures, that we have a deficiency. Is this a real deficiency?
I wouldn't consider it a real deficiency. It's just for that one particular urban renewal area for this one year.
So, and for 2018, would there be some property tax increment that will offset this?
Are you talking in particular the North Broadway area? Is that the one?
Actually, I'm looking at, on page two, and it's a combination of all the plans. I'm looking at the very final column.
Seventeen thousand.
Right.
Right. So keep in mind that there's also a fund balance that's carried over from the prior year, so this is just 2017 transactions. So if you look at the line below that, you'll see the fund balance beginning amount. So you're, the deficiency is coming from the original fund balance that was there from a prior year. So it's just a one-year snapshot.
Okay.
Does that help? So...
So if we saw the total accounting for the four areas and the total, we would not see a deficiency?
Right.
Based from 2014 to present?
Exactly.
Okay.
Yes, yes. So if you want to continue to page three, so pages three, four, five and six and seven are the individual funds themselves. So for example, page three is the general fund. As I mentioned before, this is where the general expenses are paid out of, so legal fees, office fees, travel and training, and then interest is put into this fund as well. So in the second to last column here to date, again, this is for 2017, interest earnings of $4,000. There are professional consulting and some legal services and then other charges, which were training classes, I believe. So at the end of the year, it was a positive of $277 in the general fund. And again, we had funds left over from prior year, so that's the fund balance beginning of $33,533.
Yeah, I assume that the investment earnings are from the trust fund, the state treasurer managers?
Yes, we, LIFT has two accounts currently, so there's a Wells Fargo banking, a checking account that doesn't earn interest and then a Callow Trust, which is the state custodial bank.
An $80 wire transfer at the same time?
Unfortunately, yes. Page four is the Columbine Urban Renewal Area. Again, this is the one location that's still current and active. LIFT does receive a small portion of property taxes in that area and then again, the sales tax increment from the sales tax revenues for that area as well. So $156 of property taxes in 2017 and $50,758 in sales tax increment. The only expenses are the county collection fee that they charge to collect the property taxes. Again, at the end, the ending fund balance is $70,412. Page three is Littleton Boulevard. This is one of the areas that's been repealed. I do want to note that there's sales tax increment of $40,458 in 2017. Due to accounting reasons, that was actually reported in 2016 because of the timing, so that will be reversed when we do final closeout of 2016. So just so you're aware, it's kind of double counted, if you will, right now until we do a final closeout of the year. The negative $16 is property taxes that are actually due back to property owners, so property owners have the ability to appeal the value of their property. And this is actually something that we're working with Arapahoe County right now to define how we're going to address that in future years after we refund all the property tax revenues back to the taxing entities. LIFT no longer has property tax revenue to refund property owners, so we've been in contact with the county to come to some kind of solution for that going forward. I think this is kind of a unique situation with our urban renewal areas and so they're going to have to look at some state statutes or policies and procedures on their side to determine how we're going to address that going forward.
Will it have to be some sort of legal document outlining how we're going to do that?
I'm not certain.
Okay.
I was hoping to hear back from them before the meeting tonight, but I didn't, so...
Keep us posted.
I will. I have a theory of how it can be addressed, but it's in their hands.
So this is for collections in 2017, for tax year 2016?
Yes.
And we're showing a negative increment, which means we would probably be in the same situation for the tax year 2017?
Not for Littleton Boulevard because we won't, LIFT won't be receiving any more sales tax increment on that urban renewal.
There's property tax.
Oh, property tax. So the $16, so Littleton Boulevard was repealed in 2016 and the timing of the repeal and the timing that the county received notice, you're no longer receiving property tax revenues in 2017 for that urban renewal area. The $16 are a few property owners that have been refunded due to the appeals.
So we do not anticipate, let me just, so 2017 collections were for 2016, they were repealed in?
On December of 2016.
Which means they collected, because it was after the certification?
Yes.
There's, there's no appeal that can be made for tax year 2017? Is that what I hear?
No, that's correct.
Okay.
Yeah, this would be for 2016. Assessed in '15, collected in 2016. They still have the right to appeal that year. Okay, and then the refunds as a... Okay, and then the refunds, as I discussed earlier, that's the amount that's been refunded to the taxing entities of Littleton Boulevard. The next one is North Broadway. Again, North Broadway has received property taxes of $335,513. That's the only revenue. There was no sales tax increment in that area for 2017. And then again, the refunds to the taxing entities. I do want to note, North Broadway is the one area that is still collecting property taxes in 2017, so Lift actually will be refunding the $152,338 of that to the taxing entities once we get the banking sorted out.
Excuse me? What's the difference between North Broadway and Littleton Boulevard? If North Broadway is continuing to collect, why would not Littleton Boulevard?
Well, I think with Littleton Boulevard, I'm trying to remember, I think with Littleton Boulevard, the increment, there wasn't an increment when it was compared to the base of Littleton Boulevard. The values didn't increase above the base, if I remember correctly. But let me check on that, and I will, I'll follow up with you on that.
I know we collected increment the first year on the Littleton Boulevard. We collected on all, on three of the areas, only one that we didn't collect increment on, the first was Columbine.
Because there wasn't any, I think.
Right, right. So it's, yeah, would you let me know?
I would, absolutely. I think that's exactly why, though. I think the increment, the calculation for the increment, it was below the base, and so there wasn't any property taxes collected. But let me check on that. CNAFA, small area, everything's been refunded on that, and there's no property tax revenues planned to come in on that area, $3,000. Page eight is just a summary of the banking transactions that have occurred. Again, two banking accounts, Wells Fargo, the operating account, and Calla Trust for property tax increment and sales tax increment. So at the end of 12/31/2017, there was $391,557 amongst the two accounts. Just a note to, $152,337 of that will be refunded for property taxes. And then a list of the transactions that's occurred in 2017 is below that.
I know this is Spence County, but I understand the board may have a contingent liability to pay back the city another loan.
So I don't have a balance sheet presented this evening, but there is a loan balance of $150,000 on the balance sheet.
Interest at 2.08% per annum, since that's a two-year treasury right now?
I don't recall the exact amount, but it's based on the treasury amount, yes.
And do we have any interest annually, or is it accrued?
It's been accruing.
Okay. So that $152,000 is an accrued figure.
Well, the $152 is actually the property tax portion that's going to be refunded. The loan would be above and beyond that.
That's what I think, yes. But you're all across the country, saving a lot of money.
I guess they just happen to be.
I know what you're talking about. And that has to be repaid at the end of 2019?
2019, December. Nobody is that deep.
These years are not personally liable for it.
No, last I checked.
I know, you can write a check, but...
I don't think so.
You are not personally liable for it.
In the minutes from the last meeting, there was discussion about some kind of agreement with the city and the possibility of some money needing to be returned. Is that what you're referring to?
Yes.
Okay.
So that would, the balance sheet would show that, so basically, what funds we have on hand and the ones we have to give away.
Considering you have $391,000 and $152 is going back to the county, and then you do have a $150,000 loan, that puts you about $90,000, which is made up of sales tax increment from the city, essentially. All of them, actually.
Do we have some little...
Do we have a motion to accept this report?
Second.
Second. All favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed?
Carries.
Any reports?
We don't have any committees.
Regardless of committee.
I just followed what was in your bylaws, although I have to say that your bylaws does not show the second public comment. Because at some point last year, you all added a second public comment, and your bylaws do not show that. So that, your bylaws are going to have to come back and be adjusted for that, and I'm sure you all will look over them anyway, but, okay.
Any unfinished business? Okay, new business. So we have a Resolution 1-2018. Resolution specifying the location where notices of public meetings are to be posted, a newspaper where notices and other information required to be published will be printed for 2018.
Do you want me to discuss it?
We have the motion first to accept it before we have discussion. Do we have a motion?
Why would, just a question.
Why wouldn't we discuss it first?
Let me discuss it, that's fine.
I thought, I thought Roberts...
Yeah, point of order, you have to have a motion before you discuss it.
Before you can discuss it.
Yes.
I can move, I'll move to discuss it, I won't move to accept it.
Okay.
I...
Think we have to have a move to accept it in order to have the discussion?
Oh, accepting that it is a proposal before us.
Right.
Not accepting the actual proposal.
We start the vote, no, I mean, we vote on accepting it or not after a discussion.
Yeah, I'm dying with curiosity, so yes, I move to, to accept the proposal.
Okay, is there a second?
I have a second.
Okay, discussion.
Well, since I seconded, I mean, it's pretty straightforward. When we have three places we have to publish, do at least two of the three.
Yes.
On a regular basis, and the other one, Littleton Independent, that costs a bigger bucks. But I noticed that the city was kind enough to provide the labor to post the items in the city hall and Beavis Library.
So that's, that's the three, is library, city hall, and the Littleton Independent?
No.
No, no, it's, there's, the first one is our website, which the city has agreed to update. And then there are three places around town that's going to be posted.
Okay.
It's the City Hall House, the city building, and Beavis Library. And then we have to have something that's really legal with agit type, we have to put it into the Littleton Independent.
Right, if it's specifically required by state law, then we put it in the, and we do this for the city. This is really the same one that we use for the city. I just changed it and made it for you guys. And it's required by law that we do this, we'll do this every single year. It just, it'll be your first resolution to post where you're going to post, and I take care of all your posting.
Okay, that's great.
Here's, what's the cost of posting in the Littleton Independent?
It adds up, it's expensive, it depends on what exactly it is you're posting. Are you posting the agenda? Are you saying we're having a meeting? Are you posting your resolutions because you all don't have ordinances? And by law, you don't post resolutions in the newspaper anyway. But I, there's also other places that all of this information is. It's also, not only on Lift's website, which I send it to the person in the city who does the Lift website, it is also, all this information is on the city part of the website, under the calendars. You'll always find everything there. It's also under the video and the video, there's two buttons. One is the calendar, which is there, and one is where we show our videos. It's also there. So you can get this information, not only, you know, it's on two different places on the website, it's on your guys' website, and it's also at the three places in the city.
After all that brilliant discussion, I would like to amend this motion to include the Lift website. I think it's imperative that anybody looking into Lift and go directly to our website, that it needs to be on our website as well.
If you look at line 27 to 28, it says the Lift, it's posted on the Lift website.
Okay, but it's not listed down, and that's in the warehouse clauses? It's not in being resolved, and I think it should be in that portion, because that's what's going to end up ruining the day.
So you're asking for, okay, I see what you're saying.
To amend?
That, to amend that section one, that it will have...
Correct, to add to Lift website.
Yeah, I agree, they should, they should agree. So I would move that we amend line 38 to add the words, to add semicolon, the official Lift website, and comma.
Second.
Do you have a second?
Okay. So we first move on the amendment, is, does anybody have any other questions, concerns, discussion?
I guess, I remember slightly differently that the city IT staff didn't want to deal with our website anymore, and it was supposed to be transferring to us, so are we sure we have the current tools, I don't even know if we have the passwords, to post this meeting notice?
Right now, it's still Eric that would be doing that, that at least it would get there.
Okay, I mean, as long as they're fine with it, I just want to make sure we have a way to do that.
Not completely, but...
We do, we have a way of doing it. I send it to Eric Urban, who's in economic development, and he posts it on the website.
So that's still not a problem for the city to do that?
No.
Okay. All right, so we have a vote on the amended amendment. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Now we have the original motion to accept this, the Resolution Number 1, 2018. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? So the next thing is Lift attorney discussion. So do we have a motion regarding that?
Do we need to discuss it?
Well, is there, or assume that there's some sort of...
Just discussion.
Okay, just, I can discuss a little bit. I'm a little familiar with this, and as I understand it, and maybe I'm wrong, but I don't think we currently have an attorney that the Lift Board specifically turns to regularly that would represent us specifically as opposed to the city. And it makes sense that we would not use the city's attorney, because although, although we are a creature of the council, we should have our own attorney. So what I was wondering is if there is some means of having an attorney that we could go to with questions, and maybe months go by and we never, ever turn to him. I don't know what, I don't know how, how that arrangement would be set up, I don't know what that relationship would look like exactly, but I think it'd be a really good idea, because we may have questions from time to time, and I also noticed that last year, we actually used legal services. I don't know how that happened.
I mean, I'll give you the background, and that would be agreeable. The Lift Authority was represented by the law firm of Ms. Corey Hoffman. What has hap, what happened is, is that essentially, with no urban renewal plans, the representation really became limited just to governance. Mr. Hoffman felt that it would behoove him to withdraw from the representation. The statute specifically allow, the Lift Board can use the city. I agreed and offered to, as long as the Lift Board was simply dealing with governance issues, organization, I would be happy to represent the Lift Board, as my office represents all the other boards and commissions in the city, as well as all the other city functions. If and when you were to have an urban renewal application, we would not represent the Lift Board. As long as it's solely governance issues, there isn't a conflict, and we, the city attorney's office does not charge or anything, we simply provide this as a service. You're certainly free to go out and get counsel of your own. Realistically, there are no proposals pending in front of the city for an urban renewal plan, and frankly, I don't think that there will be anything in the immediate future. I think most of, any of the representation of the Lift Board, certainly for the next few months, could be for the rest of this year, is going to be related just to governance issues. It's not going to be involved with anything else. Because there's, there's been, there are no proposals, and there are no items being, that would indicate that we're going to have an immediate proposal blocked to you, where there'd be a conflict.
So I don't, I don't disagree with everything that you said, I'm just wondering, what would happen if we had a question about the finances that might put us in conflict with the interests of the city?
If there was a time or a position where you asked a question where it would be a conflict, then at that point, I would advise you accordingly, under the collateral of professional conduct, that there's a conflict, and I could not represent you, and you would need to get separate counsel. The only area that I could see that conceivably occurring would be the loan between the city and the Lift Board, if for some reason the city council took a different position on that loan than the Lift Board. The city council has not. If it did, then that would be a conflict. And so, but you're certainly free to go out and get your own counsel if you wish to continue the current arrangement, I'm perfectly fine with that as well.
There's this pesky little clause in the bylaws that say the authority shall appoint an attorney.
Yes.
Now, my question is, should we appoint you as an attorney until a conflict arises to meet the requirements of our bylaws? Or can we just ignore it?
I do have a question, though, because I've seen two versions of the bylaws. One says may, and one says shall, so perhaps somebody with more history can...
We change it to may to avoid this exact thing.
Yeah, we did, we changed it to may. So the version that's in the pack and is not accurate, I have my version, and it does say may. And I can't remember when we did that, Nicholas.
It was June, maybe?
Yes, it was June 7th. And we did it because we weren't in a position to have to pay an attorney, and so we changed it to may.
So I guess my question would be, let's say things did speed up a little bit, how long would it take us to get an attorney lined up? Like, should we be doing some due diligence now, or is it something that we can address when that, when we come to that?
I think, you know, we, I'd give one advice, direction on that, on what, coming up in RFP or an advertisement of soliciting firms or lawyers that are familiar with urban renewal, that we have people apply and say, here are my credentials, just like you do with any other professional service, and do we would select one at that time? Do we need to sit down and maybe start thinking about what that would look like, and look at what other urban renewal authorities have done? You know, if we can find those out there, are they using advice?
We can certainly do that. One of the things you might consider would be to, if you thought that you'd like to have a list of qualified counsel, we could create what we call Request for Qualifications and Statements of Interest. First, submit those, and then they are put on a procurement list, and if and when you need a counsel, you then select off that list. Realistically, there are not a lot of firms that do this work in the state. Well, the, this is a very, very small group of qualified firms that do this work. I mean, we're literally talking, that you can count them on one hand.
This list, I'm sorry, go ahead, please.
It's, it's just a very specialized work. And then independent of this, obviously, if there was some form of urban renewal plan, and there was some form of tax agreement financing, and if there was some kind of debt service issued, then there would likely be separate counsel representing the urban renewal authority in terms of bond counsel. And again, that is an extremely small group of people who do that type of work. So I mean, you really, it's not like when we select legal services for general legal issues, where we may have 20 or 30 firms to select from. This, you could definitely go out for proposals, but it would be a very, very small list.
How do we do that again? You said this list that you described, but who creates?
We, we work with you to create that. The city has a fairly standard format, and what it basically does, this is, it's published in a variety of places, and we itemize the things that we want submitted. And then each firm submits a written proposal where they, basically, they outline their experience, their expertise. They also outline prior projects that they've done, prior, and so you are able to look at both prior projects, their expertise. And then you simply don't hire them at that point. You're just creating a list of qualified firms that you would hire from in the future.
With that RFQ that you're describing, would that, is that the work of a committee? Is that what I'm hearing, that we need to like form a committee to, or study this?
You could, you could do it.
Because we got no committees.
You could.
You want a committee?
You want to be a committee of one? But, I'm sorry.
Yeah, I mean, it can be done a variety of ways. Boards can create a committee to do it. You can sort of ask staff to give you a draft to look at, and have staff do sort of the first draft. And then this board looks at it and makes suggestions. And there's no, and there's no particular way that you have to do this.
Carol?
I would like to see us move forward with this. And we've got two attorneys on the Lyft board. Maybe we form a committee of the two attorneys to work with the attorney to come up. And I think there are about five or six attorneys in the area that, that have this area of expertise. So it's not like it's a long list of. And my guess is Mr. Hoffman is not interested in returning, so.
That makes a little less.
Yeah. One of the reasons why I think we should do this sooner than later, when we get into these documents, because there's so many things beyond the urban renewal law that we have to deal with, that I think if we got an attorney that would help us go through these documents and ask, answer some of the questions. We've asked questions of Mr. Kemp that he can't answer, because it would be a conflict of interest for him to do so. So I, I want to err on the side of being prepared and understanding what it is that we need to do. And I believe we need an attorney, I think we should go through our documents and understand, start making lists of questions that are legal questions that we need advice on, and that we get those answers and really digest the information. So when it comes time to putting the process together for accepting a project, we know what we're doing. We're not trying to figure out how to do it when we're trying to do it at the same time. So I would, if the two attorneys.
I think, I know a few of the attorneys, I know Corey. And it is a small group of people. That being said, the idea of being prepared makes a lot of sense, especially because, you know, an experience working with outside counsel, sometimes it doesn't want to work out, and you want to pass that outside counsel. And I would hate to be in the thick of a project, select somebody, and then not have had a relationship of trust and confidence built. So I'm not talking about, you know, throwing a lot of money early on, but establishing that seed of a relationship, getting their familiarity with our processes and our familiarity with them, and being able to move forward. And additionally, you know, I, I, the interviews were a public meeting, so I'm not disclosing any secrets. But I was surprised in my interview, because one of the interviewers said that, oh, the Lyft board already has an attorney, and it's the city attorney. So it was really, there seems to be confusion about the roles. And anything we can do to keep that confusion at bay, I think is helpful for public confidence and keep the process as rolling as they should.
So what is the motion? Is the motion to create a committee to work with the, consult with the city attorney to create an RFQ, to report back on what we've learned, or?
I think, if I'm here, as I'm listening to this, and we're typing this discussion, I think there's two things. It's one, as we go through a lot of the procedural stuff and the, and the legal stuff in dealing with this, do we rely on the current city attorney to advise us? To, in those areas, except for where there's a conflict? And he would recuse himself from those discussions? Or, and then, and then secondly, are we moving, then are we moving on a second track, where we're trying to start identifying the real shortlist of firms or attorneys we want to move, we would work with, when either an issue comes up that he cannot, he in good conscience can't deal with, or he doesn't want to respond because it's a conflict? Or when we get a project in developing, dealing with the legal concerns around that? Or are we just going to get an attorney to deal with all of it?
If I can see.
I think from a cost perspective, and as much as it's appropriate to still approach Mr. Kemp about the governance issue, that's what I would want to do.
I agree, and he's bound by ethics to, to let us know if there's conflict anyway. So that's a, that's a wise course. It saves money too, until, until we just drive you crazy with questions.
Or just drive you crazy. So do we have a motion to?
Let me try this. I move that the authority establish a committee to be appointed by the chair of members to investigate the, investigate procurement of legal services supporting the mission of Lyft. And I think that leaves it wide open enough that in case there's something that has been in it, that procedure of the committee can, can consult with the city attorney, and so whatever they want to do. But you get to appoint members of that committee. That's the purpose of this motion.
May I repeat for the minutes, because I know I missed a word? You may, the authority establish a committee appointed by the chair to investigate procurement of legal services according to, of Lyft.
Legal services in support of the mission of Lyft. That cannot, and we should probably put on there, cannot be fulfilled by the city attorney.
Just a second.
I don't want to step on your toes.
Okay, let me try it again, Jack. You may the authority establish a committee appointed by the chair to investigate procurement of legal services in support of the mission of Lyft that cannot be fulfilled by the city attorney. Do I have it?
Yes.
Okay.
I think that's reasonable.
I think it's a good motion. I guess what I'm a little bit concerned with is, you know, the mission of Lyft, and I understand that. But I'm a little concerned with, you know, it, it sounds like we're setting this up so that we go out and get another attorney. I mean, I know we can't put like a timeframe on it, because we really don't know what that is. But leaving it kind of open-ended like that makes me just a little concerned.
Can you say more?
Wait, 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 before we go into discussion, can we have a second? And then we'll go into discussion, and entertain your discussion. Maybe there'll be amendment to the original motion, and we can go from there.
It'll be awesome.
Sorry.
That's fine.
This is, thanks, Sam.
So, okay, we've got a motion, have a second, is there any discussion?
Well, like I said, I'm just concerned that it feels very open-ended. Like, we don't know when we're gonna do this, we don't know if we're gonna do this, that kind of thing. And I don't know how to put kind of a timeframe on it. I just, I just feel like, you know, an attorney that's gonna fulfill our mission.
Cindy, one possibility, are we allowed to just talk out of turn? Or do I have to address the chairs, or, or how does this work?
Technically, the chair's supposed to recognize you, but I'm not gonna get into that kind of.
I was, to your, to your point, it's a good one. Oh, okay. Matt, how do I ask you?
Well, if you don't talk, you know, if we don't, everybody tries to talk at once, like we just did, so. But go ahead.
Because it's difficult to transcribe.
It's very hard to minutes.
I think that's a very valid point. And, and, you know, maybe if such a committee is created, we should have a deadline to create a report. You know, that, that makes sense, you know? And then the committee doesn't have to exist after that, or it can, or whatever. But, but that makes sense. But it, but the broader question is, it's, as I understand it, it is to prepare ourselves for the time when, two things. Is to prepare ourselves for the time when we've got a proposal coming in, and the lawyers need to start doing a lot of stuff. But also, at any time and from time to time, that we might have questions that we think are sensitive, or that, or that the gentleman from the city doesn't, doesn't want to address. And I think that's a perfectly valid choice for the city attorney, you know, so. So that would be the two. But maybe by bounding it in dates, perhaps that would alleviate some concern?
I'm afraid they come back by, I would say, next month.
Next meeting?
Next meeting, or, you know.
I don't know if it can be done in four weeks. I have a meeting of disrespect, but I don't know if it's a four-week thing.
Yeah, that's what I'm thinking too. It's like, we don't want to say, bring it, but for next month, it's like, maybe it's the month after that, so maybe it's April.
And it's actually only three weeks, because I need to pack it stuff the week before. So it's really only three weeks.
Yeah, so that's better if we do, if we put it on the agenda for the April meeting, that they come back. I'm making a motion.
So do we have?
I'm making an amendment, I think, to the.
Yes.
So we're looking, our next meeting is on March, what is it?
Second Thursday.
Second, March 8th? So you need it by March 1st? So do we, so I guess we need an amendment that a committee will be formed, but they will bring back something by March 1st?
They're saying.
I don't think it can be done.
Next time.
Okay, April 5th?
Cindy, did you, did you make a motion to amend?
Yes.
Would you refuse, so I have it for the record? I'm sorry.
Well, I guess we're defining the motion now, aren't we?
Yeah, defining the amendment.
Defining the amendment.
The amendment is that the committee that is going to be formed by the chair will come back with a report to this board on April 5th. Of what they found.
In preparation for our April 12th meeting. Second.
Any discussion on the amendment? All those in favor of the amendment, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passed. So now we have the original motion?
Move to authorize, no, move the, the authority establish a committee to, appointed by the chair to investigate procurement of legal services in support of the mission of Lyft that can, that cannot be fulfilled by the city attorney.
I move to stop that at procure the appointment of legal services, period. Because I think part of this over, I don't, I don't want to have it be a foregone conclusion that we're still going to rely on Mr. Kemp for this and that. I would like to be a little more open as to kind of what we're looking at. And then this committee would come back with a recommendation for procurement, for timeline, for what the subject matter would be. I'm not quite ready to commit to limiting the subject matter at this point.
Second.
Yeah.
May I?
Sure.
Okay. The reason I put that in is because I'm trying to limit the scope of services. We've got 90 grand left that we've liquidated. It's gonna eat it up pretty good. The attorneys we're gonna need are gonna be about 500 bucks an hour. And I don't, I don't know what they're, well, I'm seeing, I'm seeing the top end in Denver right now, being 850 hours.
Yeah, for sure, for sure.
So, I mean, and you don't have a broad spectrum of attorneys that specialize in probably what we need. So I'm just trying to make sure that, you know, we don't go spending a lot of our money on attorneys or services that the city will provide for free. Yes, Carol?
Tiffany, I'm trying to remember the fee that we were paying Corey, and 285 an hour sounds.
That sounds about right.
Yeah, I think that's about right.
Some of the attorneys I know, that are in the range 3 to 350.
Yeah, yeah.
They're not the big firms.
I mean, I don't want to diminish the cost of it, I think that's important. And I like the amendment, and I'm wondering if we could work it so that we go through this process, and Mr. Kemp is available, so if the authority has an issue or a question on governance, that we, we can submit it to Mr. Kemp while we're going through this process. But I think it's, I would like for us to see that we have an attorney that we, we refer to at all times, rather than, some of our questions go to one attorney, and other questions go to a second attorney. I'd like to have some continuity in our representation. But we may not be, you know, I guess we just have to wait and see how things play out, but.
And that's the reason I, I think I are on the side of your view, send things to Mr. Kemp that we can send. But because in light of what Carol said, and we haven't really looked at it deeply yet, I would like to keep that option on the table, leave it open. Sign it another time.
Mr. Trump, that actually might be the first order of business, is determining maybe some, some general rules on what goes to one, and what goes to the other.
You know, to Jack's point, you know, attorneys aren't cheap. I mean, and if the meter starts running, you know, and if they're coming to this meeting, and we're here for two or three hours, you know, that's a significant bill that will incur. I'm just, you know, especially a lot of the procedural governance things. I'm not sure there's that many of those issues where we have a conflict, where we want somebody outside to look at that. So I just want to caution us as we move forward. Having two, you know, having the city attorney here, you know, it doesn't cost us anything. He's here to provide counsel and advice. If we have another attorney sitting here, you know, then, and again, there's a lot of times in our meetings we're having, you know, in the past year, where we've, we've talked about these procedural things, and we've gotten interpretation. I just don't want us to be saying, okay, we're gonna go to this attorney, because we don't agree with what they're telling us. To see if, they'll tell us something that we do agree, and then we incur a bill, and they come back and say, I concur with the city attorney. You know, I, again, I just don't want to get in that kind of, an issue. I can see that potentially happening if members have, don't agree with what the city, the city attorney is providing us in counsel.
I think you have a question. Were you asking me a question?
No, I'm just, I'm sorry, I just. That's Carol.
A couple of things that cross my mind, in fact, that, and Mr. Kemp has acknowledged what a specialized field this is, and there's so few people. I don't believe it's Mr. Kemp's expertise for urban renewal. And the way I heard you express it, it sounds to me like you're envisioning that we have two attorneys simultaneously, that almost as if they're both sitting here side by side.
Well, I mean, I'm not sure, I mean, again, most of our meetings have been dealing with procedural issues. And a lot of discussions have been that members have not necessarily agreed with the interpretation of the city attorney. You know, so it almost gets to the point where if every meeting we're dealing with procedural issues, and if it's perceived that there's a conflict with every issue, then we might as well just have, go ahead and hire an attorney, have him here, and incur that cost. And I'm not sure that's where we want to go. That's my, that's my theory of this.
It sounds to me like there have been conflicts.
There have been.
It sounds to me like there have been conflicts around procedural issues. So it's not clear that.
Correct.
Okay. And, and so that, that's why I want to leave the door open for now, not to, not to close it.
This is my thought on the matter. Why, I think we should rely totally on Mr. Kemp and the city services for our governance issues. Besides the fact that I've been through much training with him and I believe personally trust in him. It's the fact that the lender's always right. We owe the city 152 grand. Let's do it the city's way so they don't call our note.
And that would be a conflict. So, any more, are we, are we still discussing the amendment?
I don't think it's been seconded.
I think we both seconded it.
Yes.
It'll come back to be discussed. Oh, um, I think we're gonna get into issues, um, beyond governance fairly quickly. So I really, I like the timeframe of April bringing suggestions back and maybe a process for getting RFPs or whatever it takes and then have that subcommittee call through. And if we only get three applicants, then that's probably who we need to interview. If we get a half a dozen, then perhaps it can be called down to three. But, so we're, we're probably looking at a May date at the very earliest of even getting another attorney selected. But I have been one that has been, that I'm sure you're referring to, that has had some disagreement with Mr. Hoffman. And it's precisely this issue that it, it's brought about because he represented the city and the LIFT board. Mr. Kemp has been very open that he can only respond to governance issues. It would be a conflict of interest for him to do, not to do that. We didn't have that before. And I think it's really important that we don't end up in a situation of conflict like what we had before. And I don't want to get into a situation where Mr. Kemp is saying one thing and we have an attorney hired that says another. I just think for continuity purposes, we're better off if we hire our own attorney. We know that the timeframe's pushed out. It's not like it's gonna happen tomorrow. We can make a determination if the cost is too high at that point, that we can back away from this position. But I think we need to go out there and do the work and come back with the information and then decide how to proceed. And we may have a better idea when a project is coming forward at that point in time. And we'll understand the urgency, but not to move forward and do everything that needs to be done. At this point, I don't think is, is wise. I don't think it serves the community.
That's true. As I understand it, the motion, uh, and I agree with the motion we're talking about, is to take the overall motion, it's limited to, um, uh, legal services, period. But what we're coming back with is, that, that we can debate.
We debated that.
That will, that will cover all these same issues.
Okay.
Uh, so, uh, they're all totally valid, but, but we're gonna, we are gonna discuss them again when we come back.
Probably multiple times. So, on the second amendment, which is to change wording of the initial proposal to be?
Yeah, be, uh, committee to be appointed by the chairman to investigate procurement of legal services, period.
Okay. And to drop off the in support of the mission of LIFT?
Yes.
Done. Okay.
All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. The first amendment, which was, remind me?
Deadline, I think.
Deadline, yes. That the committee will report, have a report prepared by April?
12th.
12th. For our, no, April, the week before, April 7th, for the, or April.
Yes. And I'll need it on the 5th.
On the April 5th, for our April 12th meeting. Correct?
Committee will come back with a report to the full board at the April meeting, is what I have written down for the amendment from Christine.
That's correct.
Okay.
Cindy.
Okay. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? So we're at our original motion that's been amended. You wanna read it or we're good?
The original motion as amended, correct, is what you would like? The authority establish a committee appointed by the chair to investigate procurement of legal services.
Preparation for the April meeting.
Well, okay, that's the, the amendment. So, yeah.
Okay. Those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. So in, with that motion, uh, the chair asked if there are any members who wish to participate upon, on that committee.
I'm interested in this.
Anyone else? Okay.
Okay, it's, it's time. So it's, I, I'm busy here. It's Jason and Joseph?
Jason and Joseph.
Okay. So have you?
I have appointed them to, I have appointed the committee of two, Jason and Joseph, to.
Wonderful.
Carry out the motion.
Okay, so.
Thank you. Okay. Do we have documents for board members? Any discussion regarding those, these documents?
Yes. If I have a bad copy of the bylaws, I would certainly like a current.
Yeah, I, I don't have a current one myself. So all I've got is a red light version. So, um.
Well, we can get.
I will get you a regular, those are the regular bylaws. I'll get that and I will email them out to everyone. So that you all have the correct bylaws and we'll get them out of.
Do you want me to send it to you electronically?
If you have it, that would be great.
I think so. I'll have to do a little comparison.
Just for the record, Mr. Chairman, I just wanted to say, Wendy and Carol Breezak, and if I'm missing anybody, I apologize. Worked extremely hard to pull this stuff together and it is an invaluable tool. I'm, I'm very thankful.
No, this is, this is, I, I second that. I mean, it's great to have all this in one place where we can find it and refer to it, especially the statutes and our bylaws and such. So thank you very much, both.
And if you ever want to have anything added to it, all you have to do is let me know. I'll get it, I'll get it hole punched and then you can drop it into your books.
Just fine.
Yes, Carol.
Can we talk about these a little bit? About what they are and maybe how we might want to approach? I'm, I'm assuming people want to understand the documents and why they're important to the group. And I've thought about it for a couple of weeks about the best way to approach it, but I've been so close to this for so long.
You have. And I, and to me, and if I may, to be fair to the new members on the board, uh, I think it would be good, the homework for all of us would be to review all these documents, make a markup, whatever questions, concerns, uh, that we have and make those agenda, agenda items for our next meeting. Again, we get that a week before our next meeting. To Wendy, that would be great. And then we'll just go from there.
I'm also concerned, this, the agenda just has the documents being basically given to you. It's not really agenda sized for discussion. So I, I don't think, from a legal standpoint, under the Columbine Open Meetings Act, I don't think you can be discussing it tonight.
Correct. And I think, you know, it may be something, even at the next meeting, we decide that we need to have a study session regarding, that may be a more appropriate venue for a lot of the things we may want to discuss. And again, I think in, in fairness to the new members and probably some of us returning members to refresh our.
You guys all members too.
Yeah, it's been a while since we've looked at some of these. We look at all this and then come back next, next meeting and discuss that and figure out whether it is something we can address at that meeting that's a tweak or something, or we have a study session where we sit down and have a thorough discussion of these. Okay?
What other document that I'd sure like to have, the Prop 300?
Say again?
I'd like to have Prop 300 in here.
Yes.
It should be in there. That was one of the ones we talked about. Wendy, did it not make it?
I did not, I do not see it. It's titled.
Charter section 64.5.
Okay. When I read through it, I did not see it.
Yeah, it's a single page, just, it's just blank. It says, um, I don't, here, I'll tell you which one, where it's at.
Are they in that order that you put them in?
It's a charter section. It's right after the Columbine Square.
Yeah, okay.
If I would have tabs in the binder. Thanks for pointing that out, Tiffany. I appreciate that.
You know what? It's not mine either, Wendy.
That's, I, I marked my, oh, I didn't write it, so I need to see it, but I'm sorry. You created tabs yourself?
Yes, I did.
Trying to be organized.
Well, maybe I didn't add. Oh, yeah, it is. It's right here.
Oh, it's on the back side?
It's on the back side of the end of Columbine.
Okay, Wendy, help me out here.
Move, move the doors in front? Yes. So the amended Columbine Square Urban Renewal Plan is here. It starts like, I don't know, just a little bit of the ways in. And it's right at the back of that.
It's on the back page of one of them.
So let's see.
You have to go further. It's about a third of the way through the packet. You're almost there.
Once you're in the Urban Renewal Plan.
Right there.
The Urban Renewal Plan is 45 pages, so if you.
Oh, so the amended Urban Renewal Plan.
Yeah, that's 45 pages. So go to 45 and it's the next page.
Right there.
That's page 45. Is that a different 45?
Well, I mean, 47. I'm sorry, 47. So it'll be 47. I'm sorry, 47.
It would be 47. We're good. Thank you.
Tabs, tabs, Wendy.
Any further discussion on this?
So now we've come to the second portion of public comment. Uh, any of the public wish to speak at this point?
Can I finish mine? Just go first.
Just real quick, I'll give Wendy a copy of the condition survey electronically. That's one thing that didn't make it on the list. Um, and then also, I just wanted to let you know the TIP funds have been collected since I believe in 2014, when the plan was initially passed by the council. So you have 21 years left out of the 25 years the law gives you to collect TIP funds. So it's kind of a tick tock, tick tock situation. And keep in mind that not only does the county collect per, property taxes, it also collects use tax, which is included in the Urban Renewal Funds. So you gotta look at both the property and the used tax to be able to tie the numbers that the county comes up with.
If you could, just for record, your name again?
Oh, I'm sorry. Linda Knupke, 4th District.
Thank you. Anyone else? If you could state your name and record, please.
I sure will. Jenny Erickson, District 1. I just wanted to, um, also let you know why we had the second comment. Reason being is because, um, I've been to about every LIFT meeting there's been ever since it's been reinvented here. And sometimes they didn't have any meetings for like four or five months. So then, when there was new business on the agenda, because maybe we wanted to speak to that new business and who knows when the next meeting's gonna be? Like maybe in a year? Then we wouldn't be able to give our comments on it. So this is the reason why we had them at the end also. And it's not to drive you crazy and make you listen to us steady, but you know, we do have a few, few things to say here. This property is zoned for retail commercial and needs to stay that way because we are not lacking in apartments in this area. And Littleton does not make money from apartments. They actually cost the city money in police and fire. This is one of the largest vacant properties Littleton has and we need to make sure it is developed properly and we need the retail taxes to keep our city operating efficiently. Also, I wanted to bring up the fact that as far as I know, urban renewal does not go out and recruit business. People come to urban renewal that need it. Property owners come, they know about urban renewal if they need it. That's why I'm guessing that this big conglomerate does not need it because they have never come to urban renewal. I don't think it's right that, um, this committee, uh, every month, call this, um, property owner and ask them if they want any free money. Thank you for listening to my overview tonight and good luck to all of you in doing the right thing for the city of Littleton and its citizens. Thank you for your service.
Thank you.
I'm Chadburn. I live in District 1 and I made some notes from tonight. That's another reason why a second comment at the end is useful. I wanted to make a comment about the city attorney being free. As a taxpayer, I think that most of us don't regard the city attorney as being free. We are paying. So let me make that point for all of you. You all live in Littleton, so bam, I think you get it too. There is an issue about whether LIFT is paying the bill or not. LIFT should pay its way. Just gonna make that too. And there's a lot of history behind that, that a lot of you even weren't here when, when those things occurred. Let's see. I think you should, and I'm glad you voted to look at getting an attorney now. I think there may be some other firms that are worth considering who have some expertise in urban renewal. So maybe widen that net a little bit, not for people who do that explicitly, but who have great familiarity with other kinds of manifestations of urban renewal like eminent domain. There are many good attorneys out there, I think, who might be able to do that. I would like you to put on this LIFT website how we citizens can address you and get in touch with you. I want to see on there an email and a phone number so that citizens know where they can send stuff so that all of you receive it. And so if there's a call, that all of you get that. So that was a problem with the LIFT board two, three years ago. It's still a problem. And so please get that on, on the website, how we can send things to you just like every other board and commission that the city has. I'd also like to make the point that it's good that you folks received the documents. Please post them on the website. So we, the public, should have access to everything that you do. And if this had been done by the LIFT board before, you would already have the corrected versions of the documents that should be on record. So please take care of that and always have that there. There should always be an archive. I mean, why isn't there the original version with a date? And then here's what we did on this date? With the votes, like to see the votes? That should simply be on the website for all of us, for you and for the public. Also, a comment about study sessions. Study sessions are fine, but please do not convert your regular meetings to study sessions. If it's regular meeting night, hold your regular meeting. If you then want to close it, adjourn and make a study session, fine. But this impacts the city. And you can tell there's a lot of interested citizens. Please always give us a chance in a regular meeting to address you and bring up our concerns. This is a team. I'm glad you folks are here. It looks like you are going to work together well as a team. I could be premature, but it looks like it to me.
Thank you, Pam.
And so, um, we're part of it too. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Any further comments from the public? Seeing none, is there a motion to adjourn?
So who?
Second? Favor? Say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Have a good evening, thank you very much.